Baltimore City Council Ways and Means Committee, we're back in session for City Council Bill 23-0381, Ordinance of Estimates for the Fiscal Year Ending in June 30th, 2024. Mayor Costello, Councilman from the 11th District, Chair of the Committee, joined to my left by Councilman Robert Stokes, 12th District, Vice Chair of the Committee, Councilman Chris Burnett, 8th District Member of the Committee, Councilwoman Odette Ramos, 14th District, Councilwoman Felicia Porter, 10th District, to my immediate right is Marguerite Curran, Staff to the Committee, and the one in charge. We are also joined by members of Mayor Brandon Scott and Council President Nick Mosby's team. We are here today for the Law Department. How many slides do you have in the deck?
Eight.
Eight, okay, great. Is that, what's that, 10 minutes, 15 minutes?
I have an opening, you know, I'll quickly go through the slides, but it should be no more than 11 minutes.
11 minutes is perfect and very exact and appreciated. Mike said.
Sorry. Oh, wow, much better. I can hear myself.
Okay. Acting Solicitor, if you could introduce your team and then hit your slide deck, please.
Absolutely. Ebony Thompson, Acting City Solicitor, Deputy Solicitor Stephen Salisbury to my left, Chief of Police Legal Affairs, Justin Conroy right behind me, and I'm sad to say that Christopher Lundey is leaving us, but Chief of IMBO, but will be another name and have his own independent agency as he deserves. So, right here. So, good afternoon, Mr. Chair. He's gone. And the members of the City Council, Ebony Thompson, Acting City Solicitor and is Head of the Law Department. I just would like to highlight accomplishments that are not fully captured in the metrics and also outline plans for the Law Department to work with the City Council in fiscal year 2024. Law defends and limits liability payouts, but we also have the unique responsibility of generating revenue for the city, positioning us as a vital resource in helping to attack our current budgetary challenges. Additionally, we are charged with advocating for the city's interests before state and federal public bodies, drafting, negotiating, and reviewing contracts and proposed laws, and advising all city government elected officials and senior executive personnel. The Law Department prioritizes collaboration as a department within our city agencies and among our state and federal public bodies to maximize our effectiveness in advancing the interest of the city. This past fiscal year, some of our highlights include collaborating with the administration, DPW, and the City Council to prevent the discharge of Ohio wastewater into the Baltimore City water system, developing the legal framework for the mayor's squeegee collaborative policy that drastically decreased 311 calls by over 70%, and collaborating with Johns Hopkins Business School to utilize blockchain technology as a tool to tackle vacant housing through land recordation, land valuation permit tracking, and implementing smart contracts. We also secured pro bono legal services from Ropes Gray, a prestigious law firm that has conducted multiple successful real estate transactions utilizing the technology. We believe as we progress, as we progress in this collaboration, we will process, we will make the process for purchasing city-owned properties more streamlined that will in turn incentivize businesses and individuals to invest and live in Baltimore City as we declare war on vacant housing. We continue to work aggressively in ensuring we remain compliant with the consent decree during our work with both the implementation of the squeegee collaborative and the mayor's youth curfew policy. We constantly collaborate with BPD, the administration, the monitoring team, and the Department of Justice to work through any potential challenges or issues. As many of you know, the Law Department recently declined to sign on to the statewide settlement for the opioids litigation, as Baltimore accounted for 1% of all opioid deaths in the nation for 2017. Instead, we are aggressively pursuing this litigation, and I have personally reached out to each member of the council to help advance our efforts, recognizing that each of you possess the on-the-ground knowledge of our greatest needs and the real-life examples of programs that are effective in healing our residents during this crisis. To date, we have already received $475,000 in settlement money from the Mallinckrodt bankruptcy and signed on to the individual Walmart settlement, allowing recovery of approximately $7.2 million in damages. The remaining defendants are set for trial in September of 2024. In addition to the opioid litigation through our affirmative litigation group, we have several pending lawsuits against Polymer 80, Ghost Guns, Big Tobacco, with filter pollution, Big Oil, with climate change, and Hyundai, Kia, just to name a few. We also look forward to working with the council in advancing the consumer protection legislation that would allow the city to pursue aggregated fines against companies engaging in unfair and deceptive trade practices. We believe we are leaving millions of dollars on the table without this legislation, and we absolutely cannot recover these damages without your help. The following examples demonstrate how other cities were able to recover under their consumer protection legislation. Under Ghost Guns lawsuit, in Washington, DC, they also initiated a Ghost Guns lawsuit, but they netted $4.5 million for false advertising, which the city right now cannot bring because we do not have the statute there. This is equivalent to what the city could have potentially gotten, since it was based on the number of days the false information was online. Chicago recovered $10 million under their settlement with Uber Eats after they discovered Uber Eats was charging deceptive fees on all orders posing them as city mandated fees. A similar lawsuit could have similarly resulted in millions of recovery for the city and its restaurant industry. ABC Capital Media has covered that this entity has sold over 1,000 properties in Baltimore to foreign investors and tells them that they would flip the properties, but they never complete the work, they keep the money, and it contributes to our vacant housing. With the consumer protection law, these violations could amount to the millions of dollars. Washington, DC has been able to recover over $125 million under their consumer protection law since 2015. These are just some of the potential ways that we can recover the much-needed funds with this legislation, and we are eagerly willing to work with the council to get this passed as quickly as possible. In addition to reviewing multiple contracts involving opera funding, BOE items, and various protests that are initiated, I wanted to highlight that our Contracts Department has assisted in drafting, negotiating, and finalizing a MOU with Baltimore County for connecting a route to the Dundalk industrial area. Our Contracts Department also worked with outside counsel to successfully oppose a federal registration of the Artscape trademark by an entity related to BOPA. Without the Law Department's initiative, BOPA would have effectively controlled the use and marketing of the Artscape Festival trade name for years to come without taking into consideration the city's wants for this festival. The Advice and Opinions Group has assigned 154 city council bills to review in FY22 and reached its goal of 100% on-time reports, with many of these bills being introduced with a hearing scheduled the following day. This was in addition to the heavy demand for this group and highly complex legal advice for other important city matters. This fiscal year, our real estate group assisted BDC in the Warner Streetscape project, assisted HCD in the HUD 108 loan application for the renovation of Chick Web Recreation Center, and worked with the development, our Council President and Councilman Burnett, to remove covenants on Edmondson Avenue Shopping Center that would inhibit future development of the property. Our Labor and Employment Practice Group concluded 14 cases this fiscal year, with the total demand in those cases amounting to close to $9.5 million, of which the city paid a mere $40,000, meaning that we saved the city over $9.4 million in that practice group alone this fiscal year. Our Defense of Litigation and Central Bureau of Investigations Department likewise successfully defended multiple lawsuits of claims either avoiding or limiting liability in cases where plaintiffs sought collectively millions of dollars. And our appellate practice group has done a phenomenal job protecting favorable precedent for the city and securing multiple victories following appeals. In addition to providing advice and counsel to BPD on a variety of matters, from policy issues to labor relations and grievances, and all consent decree topics, Legal Affairs attorneys have aggressively defended Title VII in all and other employment discrimination lawsuits brought against BPD. Working closely with outside counsel, Legal Affairs attorneys have handled wrongful conviction cases and won on a motion for summary judgment with prejudice in two high-profile cases where they discovered wrongdoing on behalf of the plaintiffs that saved the city tens of millions of dollars. Legal Affairs attorneys have also drastically reduced the backlog of disciplinary cases in BPD's Public Integrity Bureau from over 90 to less than 40 cases. They continue to prepare charging documents for PIB investigations at a record pace, with each attorney handling between five to 10 charging documents per week. I'd also like to highlight that our Collections Practice Group collected over $27 million in negotiated repayment agreements for over $4.5 million in fiscal year 22, and just in the first three quarters of fiscal year 23, Collection Practice Group collected over $8.8 million and drafted repayment agreements with principal of over $2.3 million. We have conducted and scheduled various trainings internally and externally, designating one of our most experienced chiefs as our professional development coordinator, driving organization and accountability for our attorneys to get training in the areas most beneficial to our clients, including trial advocacy and practice group conferences. We also conduct internal practice group chief trainings that allow us to assist our agencies, administration, and council on issues from multiple different angles. I am also one of the attorneys utilizing our Rosetta Stone course in Spanish to better assist our residents. Operating as a united team with extreme momentum and responsiveness, the Law Department is experiencing a high retention rate, and we have several attorneys onboarding within the next few weeks, driving our vacancy rate to 3.7%, which is the lowest level we've been able to track in the new system. We have developed a succession plan for each of our practice groups to ensure that we are passing down all of the institutional knowledge from our attorneys to others. I'm extremely honored and blessed to lead an amazing group of attorneys and support staff, and I'll quickly go through these slides. The first one is providing the agency mission. I briefly went over that already, that we're providing legal advice and counsel as well as advocacy and financial real estate transactions and defending the mayor and city council in liability cases. Our goals are to assist in reduction of public health disparities across the city through effective litigation that remedies violators of local, state, and federal public health law, use additional attorney personnel to pursue legal ownership of vacant property, and hold delinquent owners accountable through code enforcement and demolition. Administrative law. The recommended budget removes $74,100 in onetime funding for temporary staff to support the initial implementation of the Administrative Procedures Act. The APA established a new process for the notice publication and adoption of regulations in the city. This process requires all new and legacy regulations to be reviewed by the Law Department and the Department of Legislative Reference. I just want to note there that our temporary position has now been hired as a full-time member in our Advice and Opinions Group, and while those duties have been transferred to the Legislative Reference Department, will be aided by the person that was hired under this temporary funding purpose that is now a permanent member. Controversies, I just want to highlight, I highlighted a lot of them, a couple of the performance measures. Percent of bill reports submitted on time, 100%. Actual in 2022, we have a target of 95 in 24, 100% target in 23. Percent of clients' rating services, good or excellent, in 22, we're 95%, I'm sorry, 22, we're 97%, 23, target of 100%, target of 95% in fiscal year 24. I know, it's a slight delay, it's okay, as long as they can read it. Police Legal Affairs, I wanted to highlight the number of misconduct cases resolved. In 2022, the target was 180, but the actual was 265. That's to account for the backlog that they have been facing. In 23, the target is 180, as we are turning around our police department, and we're targeting, we're hoping that that number goes down. And in 24, 200. Effectiveness, in 2022, we had 95%, target of 90% in 23, and 90% in 24. Workers' compensation practice, the number of claims handled, they process a lot. In 2022, actual 3,553 claims. In 23, 3,500. In 24, 3,500. And here, this effectiveness rate, the presumption is going to be against the city here, as our workers are injured, and the presumption is that they were actually injured. So, this is why the 30% numbers, 37%, 15%, 20%, while they may look low, they're actually very high. And I believe that concludes the official presentation. And open it up for any questions, and I hope I hit the 11 minutes.
Madam City Solicitor, that was a great presentation. My question is, former City Solicitor Chrishay has sent me reports on the payout to the police department, and my question to him was, why do we, some cases we don't even challenge, and he explained to me because it would have cost him more money to have the lawyers pursue that challenge. And I'm looking at what you just said in terms of those cases. So, I just wanted to share that with you, because a lot of times I was wondering why we just pay people. But after he explained to me that it costs more money to have the city lawyers go to court than just settle. So, is that still kind of what's happening now?
Yes, Councilman, it's based on, it's case by case, as we're looking at the facts, it all depends on the facts, it all depends on what type of evidence we have, and if we feel that it's going to be contentious and it's going to go, that is a factor, it's not the only determining factor, but that is a factor if we're determining if we are going to settle or not. And then at what price point, where we may settle at this level, but if we feel that we would incur more cost, that is a factor. However, if it's something that we want to establish some precedent on, that may not be as strong of a factor, and we still may pursue.
And also, I was just looking at your report you gave, you've done a lot, in a little bit of time you've been there, so that's been great. My other question is, my succession bill that I passed, I'm glad to see, and the mayor signed, I'm glad to see you utilizing it within the Law Department. My other question is, I had a resolution go to Annapolis because the redlining in car insurance in this city is awful. So, the idea is, are we going to now, my resolution said that your insurance rates should not be based on how many accidents in a certain area, but on your driving record. Have you, as our City Solicitor, looked at how we can file that lawsuit too, about people's insurance rates should be based on a driving record, not the kind of accidents you have in a certain area within Baltimore City, and that's the redlining part? Have you looked at, looking at that to make sure that maybe we can file a lawsuit against some of these insurance companies? I know they got big money, got big lobbyists, but if you look at the redlining in most Baltimore City, you can go across the street, this is a dividing line between Baltimore and Baltimore County, and your insurance rates drop immediately. So, have we as a city talked about filing lawsuit against the insurance company, how they redline here in Baltimore City on insurance rates for mostly neighborhoods that's within city, but city line?
I have not looked at that, but that is something I can research to see if it has been previously looked at, and if not, we can look into that, and I can get back to that, put that down as one of the items.
I know it's a big task, but it is an Annapolis, I think Annapolis was talking about it. I know I sent the resolution to Annapolis because it had to come from the state. So, if it's something you can look into, I think that'll be a big plus for the residents here in Baltimore, to paying these high insurance rates here in Baltimore City.
I know all about it, sir. So, I'll definitely look into that, I'll put that down on the list.
Councilwoman Odette Ramos.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Madam Solicitor, thank you for, first of all, you know, coming to Baltimore, you know, coming here to city government, and I think that was a big move on your part, so I do appreciate that very much. Obviously, you've sort of taken the agency, you know, leaps and bounds in terms of trying to get every last dollar that we deserve, and I'm supportive of the Consumer Rights Bill, so I do hope that that gets taken care of, which I think it will. I have a couple of questions. One is, the first time you mentioned this issue with BOPA and Artscape. Could you, I don't think any of us have heard about this, and so could you expand a little bit on what that was, and what happened, and how did we manage that?
Yeah, we were alerted that BOPA, or entity affiliated with BOPA, was attempting to file a trademark with Artscape, and once we were alerted to that, we immediately opposed it, and we won that. And I think I can follow up on where we are now, but I think we have now also filed our own trademark. Is that correct, Stephen?
Yes, that's correct.
So, was it BOPA who did that, or like an entity that like is contracted by BOPA?
I think so. It was, I know they were affiliated, but I don't know if it was directly...
It was BOPA that originally filed the application for the trademark. I think this was a year and a half ago, and then we opposed that, and that is now, we successfully opposed their effort to get the trademark, and then filed our own, or in the process of filing our own effort to get the trademark for Artscape for the city.
You know that this is bad, right? Like, the fact that BOPA made this move is just unconscionable, considering that they work for us to provide that particular, are we going for all of the other things that they do for us? Well, first of all, they are never going to have the Baltimore Book Festival ever again, it's going to come into waverly. But in terms of the other things, like city lit and all the other things, like, the fact that they did this, like, makes me think that they were going to, I mean, this is crazy.
I would just add, I mean, this was some time ago, I know there's been changes at BOPA since that time, but no, we're absolutely committed to working with the council. If there's things that you see that we think are problematic, I mean, this one obviously jumped out at us, and we took action.
For sure. Quick action on your part. I'm glad that you did that, but I think that we probably need to look at everything else that we brand as ours and make sure that we copyright it, or trademark it, I mean, because we can't have this hap, I mean, obviously you saw, and you can't have this happening, but like, this is really bad. We will address it during their budget hearing, and I realize that they have new leadership, but, you know, obviously, this is an issue that we need to bring before their board as well. But they cannot do this.
That was our thoughts as well.
Yeah, well, I mean, but that's the other thing, is like, I know that there are some times that there are cases that are sensitive that you cannot come to us about, but something like this, we probably should have gotten at least some notice, so that, especially with budget hearings last year, that were so contentious around BOPA, that we could have, you know, at least asked them questions. Now, again, some cases stuff is confidential, I get that, and you can't, you know, mess up an investigation, I get that. But to the extent that we can be informed, so that we can be at least notified, particularly since that is such a big deal, I think if we had known that in the last budget season, we probably would have caught their entire budget.
It did happen after the last budget season.
It happened after the last budget season. Sorry.
That's what sparked the conversation between Councilmen Torrance, Cohen, and myself.
Gotcha.
Thank you.
Yeah, no, that's bad. Okay, so I appreciate you bringing that up. The next question that I had was, could you let me know, there's an assistant solicitor and a paralegal that you're hiring for addressing vacant and abandoned properties? Is that, that's in addition to, obviously, the lawyers that DHCD is getting. So, what is the role of this particular assistant solicitor in the NREM process?
Yes, that's a great question. Thank you for asking that, Councilwoman. This is completely separate from the NREM docket, where we are taking possession of properties. This paralegal position, attorney position, are from the Supreme Court of Maryland Thornton Mellon case, basically where people are purchasing at tax sale, but they are not actually filing through.
Oh, yeah.
You see what I mean? And then we have to invalidate the deeds, because they're saying that they can hold it as equitable title, and then there's legal title, and they're saying they don't have legal title until they actually pay the fees. And so, they're sitting back and they're waiting to see if they can flip the property, but in the meantime, they're sitting vacant and contributing to our vacant housing crisis. So, what these positions, what we have done is, we've already hired, I don't know if you recall, we got funding for temps to be utilizing this, and so far, we have filed 192 motions to vacate judgments, to send, and we're sending additional 98 notices to tax sale purchasers. So, we will be able to continue that work if we have them on a permanent basis. So, this is another angle to tackle vacant housing, it's not the NREM.
Okay, so it's not associated with NREM, it's simply what we talked about in terms of vacating the judgments, both the judgments that DHCD has against some of these folks in terms of the tax sale certificates, but what you're talking about is, if somebody bought the house in tax sale, they didn't foreclose, so it's a zombie property, basically, and so what you're asking them to do is either foreclose and get it done with, or vacate that judgment, and then the city will take possession. Is that what we're saying?
Exactly. They have 90 days, they have 90 days to pay the requisite fees, so that they would take full ownership, because right now, they're just taking equity title and they just have the judgment. But that's holding up the property, because it's been going on for months or years, and the property is just sitting, because if they can't flip it, they're letting it sit. So, this would, in effect, allow us to take that property back and put it back into circulation for someone who's actually going to close on it and do the rehab work necessary to take it from a vacant property to occupied.
So, we would then take possession of the property, so we would...
No, we would just vacate the judgment, so we go back into...
It'll start over?
Yeah, and start over.
Okay, but if the liens are above the value of the property, we can just take it through NREM?
Then we could do that. Yeah, then we could switch it, but I just want you to know that it's separate. It's not, it's not the attorneys that are working on the NREM docket.
Right, right, I understand, okay.
We're attacking it from multiple ways, is what I want you to...
Right, absolutely. I have a couple other questions, but...
Sure, I just want to recognize Councilman Cohen and Councilman Dorsey also.
Right. My colleagues may have some other questions as well.
Okay.
But I do want to have, I want to come back.
Okay. Councilwoman Porter, and then Councilman Cohen.
Thanks so much, Mr. Chair. Hello, Ms. Thompson. I had a quick question. So, environmentalism is a very key issue, particularly in South Baltimore. You know, I've spoken with your office on a number of occasions, and spoken to attorneys in the field about how, at the municipal level, we can institute public health police powers in order to, in order to kind of like really go after some of these bad actors that we are seeing in industry in the city, and even to the effect of, you know, holding these bad actors accountable with risk and safety mitigation plans that are really enforced by the city. I noticed that public health is one of your goals for your office, and I'm super excited about that. What's your plan to kind of address those environmentalism concerns? And I know that there are considerable amount of issues, as you're aware, from an interstate commerce perspective, but I'm hoping that we can kind of go after it from a zoning perspective, conditional use zoning, risk, safety mitigation plans. What's your thought about that?
Well, I can tell you that our affirmative litigation group is looking at all environmental issues, whether it's Big Oil, whether it's PFOS in the water, we have cases going on, and we are always looking, and we would love to work with you if you have ideas on different avenues that we can attack. We would love to work with you on that.
Yeah, one of the major issues that I know that I've been working with Legislative Services about, and we've kind of hit a ceiling, was instituting municipal-level police public health powers. Of course, there are some case law that will kind of stop that, but I'm hoping that it'll at least take some sort of stance at the municipal level, particularly in Baltimore, where we can kind of showcase and demonstrate through our laws that we care about environmentalism and environmental justice. My next question actually has to do with the Advice and Opinions Group. Earlier this year, there was an MPIA request for the Council President's office, and I wanted to know what the reporting outcomes were supposed to be, or should have been for that. Most of my colleagues on the council, we were a little bit surprised by that MPIA request, and we just didn't feel as though there was any outcome to the council. And I know that there are charter language that support the reporting to the council president, but I'm wondering if there is some sort of reporting requirement to the council as well.
I will check into that. I know that the council president had requested it, so we had to give it to the council president, but I will see what is able to be disclosed to council and double-check that.
And more particularly, just working in MPIA, I understand the intellectual, the intellectual property component of MPIA, and so I wanted to kind of really understand the legal opinion from the Law Department about how our legislative priorities and any type of, you know, instance within Legislative Reference was not considered intellectual property, which should have been redacted by MPIA. Thank you.
Okay. I'll make a note of that, Councilwoman. Is that for yours too? So, you want to be copied on that? All right.
Uh, Councilman Cohen? Councilman Cohen. I also would like to recognize Councilman Glover from the 13th District.
Yes.
Do you want to make that a request?
Councilwoman, you want to give us your request?
Yes, if that can be an official request. I understand that there is a current opinion by the law department, unfortunately, to my knowledge, because of the process for MPIA, it wasn't circulated to all of the council members. And so I'm wondering if this Advice and Opinions Group can be that vehicle that has constant communication with the council about those reporting requirements and outcomes.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Solicitor Thompson. And first want to thank you for not settling the lawsuit with the pharmaceutical companies. You know, as I think my colleagues have mentioned, you know, I think Baltimore was and is ground zero for the opioid crisis in this country and we should expect and demand more out of folks that contributed to it. And Lord knows that a lot of people at the street level have paid a significant price for being involved in drug dealing and in, you know, either purchasing or buying drugs, but it should not, the folks who at very high levels contributed significantly and made massive profits off of this crisis should not escape accountability as well. So appreciate you going after that. Appreciate you coming and visiting the peer navigators in the library. My first question is on that. Do you have any idea of when you would expect to sort of know where we're going in terms of that, those cases? You know, if we do not settle, what does the litigation look like? What is the, you know, what is trial period? Just try to give a sense of timeline on kind of where this is all headed.
Right. Without disclosing too much, because it's an active litigation, I will tell you that we do have a trial date in September of 2024. And again, thank you for allowing me to come see the peer navigators and with that on the ground information and really hear the stories of the impact that that program is making and how deep the Enai Pratt Library is assisting with this crisis is, I just learned a lot, so thank you for that. But we do have a trial date for September 2024. Fortunately, we were able to complete a lot of our local depositions and do a lot of the local work, but there still is a lot of discovery left to be done. And so I will, like I said, I will keep you updated as I can, but we are marching towards the September 2024 trial date.
Great. Thank you for that. My second question, I know that in the most recent session in Annapolis, there was debate and conversation around the local policing powers for Baltimore City. To be honest, I was confused about where that all landed in terms of our ability as a municipality to legislate our own police department. I think we've sort of received conflicting guidance from folks in law department, solicitor. So wanted to just sort of on the record, get your understanding of at this juncture, given that we did not formally repeal the provision that would have given full policing power to the city council, where are we? What, where are sort of the boundaries on what we can legislate our police department to do or to not do? I know there was questions around not being able to legislate strategy within the department and not be able to legislate the, you know, how many officers are in a given district and sort of the tactical, but where did it land? What can we legislate and what can't we legislate? And again, I'm assuming that some of this may end up in court if we go ahead and do it, but just would love your understanding.
Sure. So then thank you for that question. You can legislate right now anything that is not going to encroach on the police powers of the commissioner. So it's not going to be micromanaging, so you can't do strategic, as you're saying, implementation, how many hours, what the police department should be doing effectively to achieve its actual goals that we pay the police commissioner for their expertise to have. However, what we were attempting to do was codify, and this is still the plan, the police powers in the charter, because they don't exist. They just, which is, I was surprised. So we want to do that and I, but right now, you can control everything that is not going to butt up against that, so it's just no micromanaging of the police powers. That's, that's my understanding.
So let me just press on that a little bit, because I think it gets complicated when you talk about the commissioner's power and the commissioner, you know, sets policy and sets vision, sets direction. For example, could we, to your knowledge, mandate the police department to go through trauma-informed care training? Could we limit their ability to use AI or facial recognition technology? Just want to understand from your perspective, sort of where the line starts and ends for the commissioner's powers.
Yeah, so what we would do, we would take each, we would look at each bill that you were attempting to pass and then we will work with you through that. And that was, that has always been the law department's commitment anyway through this, because we know it's difficult, it's our first time doing it and we will work through you, work through that with you, especially being mindful with the consent decree to make sure that we don't butt up against anything with the consent decree, because we've done such positive work and we just don't want to revert backwards. So the law department is here to work with you if there, as you have the bill, it depends on the details, and I hate to say that to you, but it depends on the details and we will look at that and we would, you know, try to navigate through those challenges. But I think there's one for, I think there's one, there's a bill up right now for like body worn cameras that I don't, I don't really foresee. I don't see why that would encroach on the police powers of the commissioner, if you just wanted an example. I think that's one that's, I don't know where it is, but I know it exists somewhere.
Okay. Appreciate that. Still a little fuzzy for my liking, but do appreciate you helping us work through that.
We'll know that we'll work with you. It's not like it's, this is the answer and then you're on your own. We're still your lawyers and so you, if there's something that you want to pass, we're always here, either through advice and opinions or you can contact the administration and we'll work, because we understand that it is something that is new that we're doing and we're just trying to navigate and we don't want to, we don't want to butt up against all of the good work that we have done, but we'll work through it with you, because we all think that it's important and that local control needs to happen. Even the police department believes that, so it's, we're all on the same page, we just got to work through it together, but we're here, we're not leaving you.
No, definitely appreciate that commitment, appreciate, you know, your thoughtful work on this. I do think that when the citizens of the city passed the charter amendment, the understanding was that the council would have full power to legislate the police department. And so I do think that that has gotten muddled, unfortunately, but again, appreciate your commitment to supporting us sort of as we endeavor to potentially engage legislation around the department. And again, thank you for the work that you're doing. Thank you for really pushing, especially on the issue around opioids.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. In this order, Councilman Burnett, Councilman Dorsey, and Councilman Glover.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm trying to pull this thing closer to me. Complaints before? All right. It's you, Madam Ackerman-Clister, one of the eighth district's finest.
Thank you, sir. I love being in your district.
Love having you in the district. The first question I had was on the vacancies work group. I see that there's an allocation of two positions, but can you talk a little bit more about the makeup of the work group and if there's any other areas that they'll focus on beyond the interim process? I guess what is the scope of work that they're set out for?
For the two positions that we're looking for, it is going to be relegated to handling the cases of invalidating those, the judgments where people have not, within 90 days, actually paid the fees and taken full possession of the property, because we have seen that it's a huge source of contributing to our vacant housing crisis. And so we want to alleviate that, so those positions are dedicated to that. They also are going to be doing other collections work, not just that, but for the vacant housing portion of it, that's what they are assigned to do, but they will also assist in collecting with the rest of that department to help bring in revenue for the city.
Got it. Okay. The, on that note, can you talk a little bit about the reduction in percentage of payout in damages, claims? So this is, I think this is like Service 661, Page 311, talks about claims just generally. How many, and maybe you have this on hand, maybe you don't, if not, we can just do it as a request, but how many claims does the city receive annually? Like things like, you know, damage to a car or unresolved issues with property damage with city workers or stuff like that, like?
This is, and I inquired about this one as well, the payout damages claimed, this was specifically highlighting the labor and employment group that was, they received damages and the aggregate is 14 cases where it was $9.5 million where they claimed damages and we've only had to pay $40,000. So they, I mean, like massive wins, they had a massive, massive fiscal year. So it was 2% of what the damages were claimed. But I can work to get you, if you are looking for just all, are you looking for a specific practice group? Because that would make it easier, but just every claim that?
I'll send you an email.
Okay, all right. Thank you, sir.
We can narrow that down.
But I can get that information for you, because what I do want to, what I do want to communicate is that, because I know if you see us at the BOE and you just see law coming up for law settlements, it seems as though we're just settling cases and we're not, we're grinding and we are fighting and we're winning. It's the ones that you, you know, it's just the ones that get to the BOE, so it gives that, it gives us sense as if, you know, we are just settling. So, and we want to dispel that narrative.
Councilman, could you give us the request?
I'm going to email it and I'll copy it, Marguerite, that way we narrow it down a little bit.
Okay.
I didn't realize it was going to be that broad. Last question, Mr. Chair, for this round, and similarly on these complaints. Do you all track when individual officers have multiple complaints and BPD officers have multiple complaints that end in litigation or payouts and how much the misconduct costs the city during their tenure? And the, sort of a follow-up to this is, some other cities have been exploring requiring law enforcement officers to carry insurance to cover these sort of repeated payouts. Is this something that the law department has explored?
I believe there was legislation in Annapolis for that. It didn't make it too far, did it? But I'm going to defer to Chief Conroy on the numbers of the actual police officers that have had numerous violations or numerous payouts, because that is something that we are, I don't know if it's going to be part of the accident work group, because I know we're looking at repeat offenders for accidents, but I'm unsure if they already track that metric, so Chief, I got to turn it over to you.
Thank you, thank you so much. Good afternoon, all. So BPD does not currently track repeat, let's call them repeat misconduct violations that result in litigation. All of it is tracked through PIB, the Professional Police Integrity Bureau. All misconduct, all allegations of misconduct, both external brought by citizens, internal brought by BPD. So you have metrics there that track this. Correlating those metrics to lawsuits is not something that's actively being done and it's because the allegations in a lawsuit are merely that, they're allegations. And oftentimes, let's put aside car crashes, let's put aside property damage, which are very easy to sort of get your hands around. Let's say the allegation is a false arrest. Oftentimes, the plaintiff is naming not only the arresting officer, but everyone in the chain that signed a report, everyone in a chain that touched the piece of evidence, everyone along the line. And so it's hard to know whether that officer is being named just because of his proximity or his role as the evidence control supervisor, or he actually engaged in misconduct. And so the lawsuits are usually, not always, but usually filed long after the investigation is done. So that is something I can, I can look into and see if that's something we would start tracking. I know that in the course of a lawsuit, we do have the files from IAD, PIB now, Internal Affairs. We have the files from PIB, we're mounting a defense based on what those files say, in addition to the personnel file and everything else. So we internally are tracking that and using that in our defense of the case, but whether there is a document, there is no document that exists that tracks those two things together.
Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Of course.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
I love our law department. Thanks for being here.
Hello, how are you, Councilman Dorsey?
I'm great. So with that, I will say a couple of things first, just a couple of comments. I have not caught up with you, Ebony, in the last few weeks. I just want to tell you that our last conversation about application of funds to drug treatment, my ability to share my own experience with you is one of the most meaningful and important conversations I have had with any person in the city government as long as I've been here. It has stuck with me and I really just value that so immensely.
And I feel the same way. I've been thinking about you ever since, so, yeah.
Thank you. Stephen, preparing for a deposition and being the subject of one is also one of the most amazing experiences I have had as a member of the city council and as a person. I don't necessarily wish it on everybody, but I relish the experience for once. I don't need it a second time.
Thank you, Councilman. As that litigation is still ongoing, I won't comment other than to say that we profoundly enjoy your company as well.
Thank you. And I just note that the Consumer Protections Office has just been wonderful to work with Sarah and I just really value the thoughtfulness, the depth also of the bill report on the Office of Licensing and Consumer Protections, the depth of work from Jeff Hocksettler on that report. And also that there was an addendum, a second letter from Sarah specifically addressing not just form of legal sufficiency, but the advocacy for what the bill offers us in the ability to expand our affirmative litigation's work as a city is just so, such a great example of the work of the law department all around. So thank you so much for all of that. The thing I want to ask about is kind of the opposite of what Councilman Burnett was asking about, not the payouts, but the money coming in. Over several years, I have asked over and over again, in fact, already in these hearings, asked about things, matters related to damages to city property from vehicles crashing into them. And over and over and over again, people have mistaken my effort and interest to be, how are we getting more money back? When actually, I'm just interested in stopping the crashes for safety reasons and showing how much money we are losing and squandering by maintaining unsafe roads and that that money could be better spent in ways that make us a better city and prevent this loss of money. However, along the way, I've realized we are doing an abysmal job of recouping any funds. And I had a particular experience last year where a driver crashed into some planters in front of the Hamilton Branch Library. And, you know, they probably cost the city $1,000 or so, but we knew who the driver was. We had a police report from the crash and we had the driver saying, hey, look, I'm totally responsible, ready and willing to pay, just let me know how much the damages are and, you know, what we're going to do to get this replaced. And it took me personally at least four months to get DOT to simply tell the law department the value of the damaged property. I had to follow up personally at least a half a dozen times, if not closer to a dozen times, just to get DOT to tell the law department what it was, what the value was, so that the law department could pursue recouping that money. Further, none of that would have happened had I not done that, because what I understand is that there there's no process in place for a police report to document that damage was done to a city property, and for that police report to then be rendered to somebody to even know, oh, DOT property was damaged, we gotta get this money. Like, there's no system and process in place for the Law Department to ever know. And this seems to be evidenced in the rate of which, at which we are recouping. I've looked at the numbers on how much we lose in terms of value of damaged property each year. It's in the range of 2.5 to 2.7 million dollars just from streetlights. That doesn't include jersey barriers, or guardrails, or fencing, or any of a number of other things. This is, streetlighting alone, we are incurring two and a half million plus dollars in damages every year from cars crashing into it, cars driving off the road. And our rate of recouping that money is less than 1%. So I want to know what I can do and what we can do to work with the Law Department, to lead the effort, to have a system in place, because, and, 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 look, if you've ever been involved with the police in Baltimore City for any reason whatsoever, you know it's a near impossibility to get a report from them, period, and all the more so in a timely fashion. I regularly hear from constituents saying, I have followed up to try to get a report of this, my car being stolen, or this or that, and spending months pursuing it and getting no result. So I want to know what we can do to put an actual system in place so that we can do better. And the second question I have is, is it even worth it? Because when we're talking about the value of a streetlight on a case-by-case basis, and the value of the damage being, you know, like $1,300 per, and a person's usually only crashing into one streetlight at a time, is it worth financially for us to allocate Law Department manpower to actually going after that money?
To answer your question, I think it's a, it's a, a way to tie it in where it needs to be streamlined if we were gonna do it. So I would, I immediately start thinking about the electronic reporting that we're doing, or moving towards with officers not having to go back to the station to write their reports. We're trying to equip our vehicles, the vehicles now, where they could input this information in real time, whereas other things are going on and maybe there's a lapse there, there's other things going on, they can input it real time so that we can capture that, and that might be our best opportunity to note if damage is there, because they have no issues if they're submitting a claim to the city to tell us all the damage that we have, you know, we've destroyed in accidents and things like that, and we have to pay it. So, but if it could be streamlined, but, because you're right, if there's a disconnect where we have a police report that doesn't have any indication there, how would we know to go and check, you know, each particular accident? That's probably highly inefficient, but if there was somehow, you know, if there were pictures taken and we saw it, and it was streamlined, and it was attached probably to that electronic report, that's something that would be easy for us, easier for us to capture and streamline it so that it wouldn't take extra steps. So these are the advances in technology that I'm promoting, as well as the Police Department is promoting. We all want these advances in technology so that we can make our jobs easier, also be able to recover in those situations, because if that's an opportunity for us to recover, especially with our budgetary challenges, we don't need to overlook small ideas like that. So I would be willing to see if that is something that we can incorporate as we move towards a more electronic process where we're documenting, documenting things with police reports.
Thanks. You know, it's, it's also, there are cases where even if DOT observed that a streetlight had been knocked down, where there wa, you know, they might, they might not even follow up and go, hmm, how did this streetlight get knocked down? I don't know, let me check with the Police Department to see if they have any report of an incident, like when it happened. Like, there's no investigation, there's no inquiry that happens, DOT is just like, oh, send the guy out there with the vehicle who picks up the things and takes them away, and, you know, maybe BGE will replace it in the next four years. I guess what I'd like to do as a follow-up here is for me, and law, and DOT, and the relative BPD folks to get together and be real clear about where the deficiencies are in the process and communications, and game out the different scenarios for how we do this. Because, because there, the answer we always get is, oh, you know, just so many of these happen and there isn't a police report. I think that there's plenty more that have police reports that are just never getting pursued, that are never making their way to the right people. And, and I also think that DOT is highly, highly unresponsive when being asked, what is the value of this thing? How much should we be going after?
Well, I can definitely assist in setting that meeting up on the part, I can definitely make sure that law will be there to be a part of that meeting, so.
If you could follow up to set that up, I'd appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
I mean, and to my second question, is this worth it? Like, if it's only 1,200 or 1,300 bucks a pop, is it worth the Law Department's time, or whoever's time, to actually go after this?
If it doesn't, if it doesn't take any extra effort, if we tack it on, sort of like how they tack on when they submit claims to the city, like, let's say one of our police officers hits a car, and they tack on the, you know, the damages that are done to the car, to them, to, if it's all streamlined and it's all together, you can evaluate it at one time, and we probably negotiate it, and they cut certain things, but it can be part of the package. As long as it's streamlined and you don't have to do extra work to get it, if they capture it at the same time, I don't see why it can't be part of the overall case evaluation.
Okay, then you'll follow up and we'll get together.
Yes, sir.
Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Councilwoman Glover?
Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
About three years ago, I had a constituent who, police unfortunately raided her house, knocked the door down. She waited three years to get paid. Only reason I'm saying that, I hope, as intelligent, smart as you are, something like that is a priority at the top of the list, and tell us, somebody waiting three years to get paid for a door to be replaced after they already replaced it. So my question is, are you making those small little cases a priority at the top of the list instead of somebody waiting three years to get paid for a $500 door? You know, and by the time it's a steel door, the price then already went up, and they're not gonna get the, they're not gonna get the new price for the door anyway. So I think that's something that probably you're already doing, but are you, have you already looked at how you prioritize stuff that you can just get off your books and get it out the way?
Absolutely. Even before we made the transition over to Work Day, and I'll turn it over to the Chief of Police Legal Affairs in a minute, but I do want to state that even before we made the transition over to Work Day, it's a big thing, we're payments, and I'd always been working with Finance, Director of Finance, before we made that transition, to make sure that our settlements are actually getting paid, or our judgments are actually getting paid. Because we actually incur, we can incur additional fees and penalties if we wait to pay, if we have an order to pay, or there, there is a settlement and we don't get it paid in a specific time. So absolutely, that's always been a goal of mine, even when I was deputy.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry, I was gonna-
I'm sorry. Thank you, Ebony. I would just say that for BPD, just as the Law Department has a Claims Bureau to investigate claims brought against the city, BPD has its own Claims Investigator, so any claim brought against the BPD, broken door, vehicle damage, we investigate fully, and we try always to settle without the need for litigation. As you can imagine, some of the claims against BPD are not so minor. So oftentimes, those claims don't settle, they result in a lawsuit, but we're always looking to, if we can solve a problem quickly, to solve the problem quickly.
Well, I'm glad to hear that, because the one I'm talking about is minor. The ones you always pay out, they seem to me move faster than somebody replacing a door to their house. So I want to recognize Councilwoman McCray also, Councilwoman Odette Ramos.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, just going back to what my colleague was asking about, in terms of the Vacants Work Group is no longer working together, correct? Or is that work group still working? Because my thought, my understanding was that the work group was put together for the 30-day memo, and then we're using the memo as our sort of implementation strategy for addressing vacancies? Or is the work group actually still working together?
I don't believe it is, it has stopped working. I believe that it, it may be being restructured, but I, I don't believe that we've exed the work group. But I can assure you that work is definitely being done, it's a high, high priority-
Oh, of course. Oh, I know work is being done, there's a lot of people working on it, yeah.
But I, I think it may be being restructured. I don't think it has been dismantled.
Okay. Well, yeah, we had asked for the, in one of our hearings regarding city stat, that the city administrator is putting together different stats for different topics, and that she would put together a stat, not just about interim, but just about the vacancies in general. So I, she'll get back to us on that, but just so you know, it's, maybe that's how they're transitioning it, I don't, I don't know. But I am, like, super excited about the emphasis that the Law Department has put on addressing vacancies, particularly with what we just talked about earlier. And so I think that that's, that's great, and I understand the blockchain technology is also gonna really take us leaps and bounds in terms of figuring out who the owners are, making sure that we're getting through the process a lot quicker. This is huge, so I really appreciate it.
Yes, I'm super excited.
Yeah, no, this is really great. So I'm really looking forward to continuing that work as well. I want to shift a little bit on my second question related to what my colleague from the 10th was talking about. I mean, we, I guess the question is, what is the role of the Law Department relative to being the lawyers, lawyer, the lawyers for the mayor, the lawyers for the council, the lawyers for the council? I mean, we, this particular incident that she had talked about was, you know, something that we had not ever had to deal with before, and yet, you know, one of the documents that is, was important for the Council President, we were not allowed to have. So, I mean, so just give me a general sense of, like, how do you approach all of this? Now, granted, you shouldn't necessarily be the problem solvers for every conflict, whether it's inter-agency or whatever, but I'm just, you know, trying to get a sense of what we should be counting on in terms of your role, relative to the fact that you're basically all of our lawyers, and which means you have to advocate for all of us, which means that there's probably gonna be a conflict here and there. So how does that work?
It's, well, that is a great, great question, and thank you for asking it. The Law Department actually represents the city, is our client. The client, the, our client is the city. And sometimes that means that we have to make tough calls for the mayor, for initiatives that he may want to do, that City Council wants to do, that the heads of our agencies want to do. It's in the best interest of the city. Now, if we have charter requirements, right, or in this particular instance where a certain privilege belongs to someone, in this particular instance is the Council President, we have to adhere to that. We have to adhere to the laws, we have to make sure that all of, all of us adhere to the laws. So in this particular instance, it, it, that privilege was with the Council President. But there are certain things that you can ask, and it would be also, it would also be privileged unless you decide to give it up, right? Unless you decide to give that privilege up. But if there is something specific where it outlines that that privilege belongs to the Council President, we can't waive that privilege. He can, but we can't. So that's, that's kind of how it works. And I know it's, it's very confusing, but really for the Law Department, the city is our client, which is, we have to advocate, defend the interests, and advance the interests of what's best for the city. But if there is something that is a bright line where it says that privilege belongs to that person, we cannot break that privilege. Only the person that has the privilege can break it.
In terms of the advice that you give to that person?
Yes, if it's, if it is stipulated, in this particular instant, we have to look at, we have to, it depends case by case. But in this particular instance, it is the Council President that would have that privilege, and he has the ability to break it. We can't. We don't have that, we don't have the ability to break that privilege.
I guess we can go into the weeds of what that specific thing that we're talking about is, but, you know, I think that it's just something that we face all the time, you know, in, even in, even in budget, or even in bill things, we're like, whoa, great, they want to kill our bill, and this is, you know, so it's a matter of figuring out, like, what, what is the, for the best interest of the city means to the Law Department? Is it, you know, making sure that we're not under liability, which I think most of the time it is, so that nobody sues us? Or is it, you know, I mean-
Adhering to our charter, of course, is number one, and making sure that we stay within the bounds, making sure we stay within the bounds of the consent decree, making sure that, of course, we adhere to our laws. So anything that we pass or attempt to pass that does not adhere to that, we have to call that. But yes, we are defending the interests of the city against sometimes outside of the city, right?
Right.
And also sometimes it's inside, but it's very fact-specific. So it's not a, it's not a bright, bright line, it looks at, it looks at the facts, but the city is our client.
Gotcha. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
So we're joined by Council Vice President Middleton, Councilman Schleifer, and I thought we were joined by our chair of this committee, but, Councilwoman Glover?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. The question that I have is, so is there, like, statute of limitations when it comes to individuals who may have wanted to, like, seek a lawsuit against the city of Baltimore, reference to their civil rights? Like, so one particular incident happened where a mother and her child, the young man was, he was overdriving, and he happened to see a situation occur with the police. There was a shooting, and what he did was, he called the police himself. When he called the police, the police came on the scene. The one police officer stated to him that he wouldn't be in no trouble or anything like that, but he wanted to call his mother. And she stated to the parent that, you know, your son is in, you know, under investigation or anything like that, but we do want to ask him some questions. When she left, the other officers that came on the scene eventually arrested this young man. He was, he was jailed in shackles, and he had gotten a mugshot. He got a call later on stating that everything that they did was gonna be clear, like, they wiped the mugshots or whatever the case may be, because he felt like, again, here it is, that I was the one that called the police, because I witnessed what had happened, but yet I had gotten arrested for something that I didn't even do. So they reached out to an attorney at one point in time. Paperwork was filed with the mother, but now the young man is now 18, so he has to, you know, he has to do it on his own. They're wondering if, you know, can he file that complaint again over it's, like, over?
Well, while there is a statute of limitations, we can't give out legal advice to people that are not our clients, so, that wouldn't be our client. But there is a statute of limitations, I can, I can answer you that.
Do you know how long, how long it is?
I, yeah, I, I-
I mean, I don't, I don't think this individual-
There is a statute of limitations, it's very case-in-fact specific, and, but we, we don't generally give out legal advice, we don't give out legal advice to people that aren't our clients. So it's, I can't advise them on that, on that, on that specific instance, but there is a statute of limitations.
Okay, so that's what I'll take back, that there is a statute of limitation. All right, that's all I wanted to ask.
Sorry.
All right, thank you, it's fine.
Council Vice President?
I guess this just leads into-
I guess this just leads into, does your department engage in legal awareness and education to the community? Do you have, are you invited? What are some things that you do to help the community be aware of what your office does? And just legal awareness, and that, and that education piece? Are you connected with schools in the area? Are...
Absolutely. And good to see you, Madam VP. I didn't acknowledge you coming in. Yes, we work with multiple schools, especially law schools. We bring them in to speak. We speak there. I do moot court judging. I do career affairs, assist them with getting things.
You said moon courts?
Moot court. I'm sorry, moot court. So, so different, different competitions that law school students participate in, so that they can practice their advocacy as they are preparing to go into the legal field, and assist them with, helping them with their arguments. We also, with consumer protection, of course, if we have that legislation, we would be able to get the public, educate them on certain issues that could be violations that they could bring to us, and we could advocate those violations and hold those companies accountable. But, yeah, we work a lot with, tons and tons of schools, especially law schools, and we have tons of interns. We have a Law Links program where we work with high schools, where we bring them in. That's actually how I got, my first internship was here at City as a junior. And I worked here as a Law Link intern. And so that's what kind of solidified my, my love for the law. So we absolutely give back, and especially to encourage people to come into this field. I'm a big advocate for that. I really want people to embrace and, and come in and enjoy all the benefits that this field has to offer. So thank you for that question, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Okay, colleagues, you know, we have a 2 o'clock bill before we start out, 2:30. So we're going to wrap this up, because we have a 2 o'clock that we need to vote on, and we'll be back at, next will be 2:30, Mayor's Office of Minority and Women on Small Business. Thank you.